All right. Good evening, everybody. We're going to go ahead and get started. Welcome to the May 28, 2025 Regular City Commission Meeting, starting at 6 o'clock PM. All right, we will start with introduction of new staff. Who do we have coming up here? Ben?
So we have two new staff members with the Finance Department. Start with Jill Monshine. She is our Water Account Clerk. She has experience from City Buchanan, so she sure knows how water works. And our Assistant BSNA, she has a great attitude, very hard worker, and she really fits. So everyone, welcome Jill. Then we have Jacob Sutton, the new City Assessor. He's a City Assessor or record for the City of Celine. Also a great attitude, hard worker, great with the details, also a great fit. Please welcome Jacob.
Anything that you want to say? No pressure. You don't have to.
Thank you for the opportunity.
All right. All right. Welcome to the team.
Good. Thank you.
All right, now we will move on to Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next order of business is approval of the agenda. What is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
All right, Abby, call the roll.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sirola?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
All right, next is item number four, designate May as ALS Awareness Month.
All right, so fellow commissioners, I bring before you a resolution to designate designate the month of May as ALS Awareness Month. ALS is a disease for which there is no cure, and it brings increasing hardships as it advances on both the diagnosed individual and the family support structure that surrounds them. Through one of our residents, my friend Jim up here, I have become more aware of the hardships that people with ALS face within our local community. While we cannot cure this disease, I'd like to present the following resolution as an action that we can take right now to bring awareness and show our support for the organizations and ALS advocates. Their work is vital to provide care not only for the patients themselves, but for the families that are supporting them in this vital time. This time, I'd like to read the motion, the resolution, whereas amyotrophic lateral sclerosis, also commonly known as Lou Gehrig's disease, is a progressive fatal neurodegenerative disease in which a person's brain loses connection with their muscles, slowly reducing a person's ability to walk, talk, eat, and eventually breathe. And whereas thousands of new ALS cases are reported every year, and estimates show that every 90 minutes, someone is diagnosed with ALS and someone passes away from ALS. And whereas, on average, patients diagnosed with ALS survive only two to five years from the time of diagnosis. And whereas, the exact causes of ALS are unknown, and there is no known cure for ALS. And whereas, research indicates that people who have served in the military are more likely to develop ALS and die from the disease than those with no history of military service. And whereas, securing advances to new therapies, durable medical equipment, and communication technologies is of vital importance to people living with ALS. And whereas, clinical trials play a pivotal role in evaluating new treatments, enhancing quality of life, and fostering assistive technologies for those living with ALS. And whereas, ALS directly and indirectly impacts our community, as well as people throughout our state, country, and world. And whereas philanthropic philanthropic organizations conduct research globally and commit support to hundreds of projects across the United States and other countries to accelerate the pace of discovery, fueled by the hope that one day ALS will be livable disease for everyone, everywhere, until a cure can be found. And whereas ALS Awareness Month provides an opportunity to increase public awareness of the dire circumstances of people living with ALS, acknowledge the terrible impact this disease has on those individuals and their families, and support research to eradicate this disease and support the families of individuals diagnosed with ALS. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of St. Joseph City Commission hereby proclaims the month of May 2025 as ALS Awareness Month in the City of St. Joseph. We call upon all our residents and fellow communities in southwest Michigan to join in supporting ALS research, advocating for increased funding, and standing in solidarity solidarity with those affected by this relentless disease. I move that the City of St. Joseph adopt this resolution.
I support that.
All right. Any public comment on the matter?
No, thank you for highlighting that.
Thank you. If you wouldn't mind for public comment, coming up, sure.
My, I have a friend, Karen Gary, at the Whitcomb, that I swing every day. And the bad thing about it is, he and several of the others there have tried to go out to their cars, and they don't know there's a meter across the street there. So they park there and try to get their walkers in and things. And it takes time, just like you say. They mean, he's still moving about, but not that fast, you know, because of the ALS.
Right.
And so I just needed to bring that up. It's it's difficult enough without the parking issue over there. And I also saw someone with a wheelchair trying to get, they didn't know where a meter was. Someone told him, there's a meter. Oh, well, we don't know nothing about that, you know. So anyway, a lot, I've seen a lot.
Thank you. Any other public comment about the proclamation?
I believe we have a physical copy to present to Jim.
Sure. Next your name. Okay. I'm going to pass this down. We're each going to sign it. Absolutely.
I want to thank the St. Joseph Michigan City Commission, the mayor, the mayor pro temp, and commissioners for this proclamation. ALS has been known for 150 years, yet remains a mystery, which makes this proclamation so important for raising awareness. For me to be here today, I needed to be dressed by an aid and moved in a power wheelchair. When I sleep, I need a machine that helps me breathe the rest of my life. This is considered minor in the ALS. Eventually, I will need a beating too, but I won't be able to speak. I will need a full time ventilation. Those of us with ALS today are unlikely to live longer if the seed of discovery is pure. But this proclamation is more about, more than about, more than research to find a cure. It's also about for families devastated by this. Many go bankrupt for repair costs. Children drop out of college to care for a parent. We need to support these families now, not just upon research. So I want to acknowledge the incredible work of the Susan Mast ALS Foundation, right here in West Michigan. They provide support exclusively to West Michigan families facing ALS. We who are afflicted are so grateful for their dedication. If anyone out there is into food and health and vet, whether it's a conclusion, this proclamation isn't just words of unfaithfulness. It's called acting. The call to support research, yes, but also a call to support the families who face ALS right now. Let's turn this awareness into action and work together to ease over.
Thank you very much. And we have your signed proclamation right up here for you. All right, that then moves us along to item number five, public comment. Oh, for the, yeah, yeah, let's call the roll on that one.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sirola?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Now, onto item number five, public comment. We had some requests for maybe some better literature on what this means. So if anyone would like a copy of our policy, it is in the back of the room. Just to highlight some of the items on our public policy, public comment policy. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Action items each have a separate opportunity for public comment. Persons wishing to speak, comment on an event shall wait to be recognized by the mayor before speaking. Once recognized, the speaker should speak from the podium up here. Use the microphone so that their comments can be heard by the city commission and the audience, and they should identify themselves by name and address before commenting. Citizen groups may appoint a spokesperson to speak on behalf of the group. The spokesperson should identify the group they represent and may speak for up to three minutes. Public comments are a means of communication from the public to the city, and we ask that they are respectfully directed to the commission. Please focus on ideas rather than personalities. Stay on topic and be respectful to other speakers' opinions and experiences. Again, if anyone wants a copy of the policy, it's on the table in the back of the room. At this point, we will take public comment on items that are on the consent agenda or not on the agenda at all. And again, limit your comments to three minutes. Whoever wants to come up? Are you waiting for public comment? Please go ahead and use the podium.
Tim. Tim Johnson, 1919 Forest Avenue. I'm speaking against giving employees six week with pay for adoption or having a baby. They have sick time they could use. Looking at the city Personnel Manual, page 51 and 52, employees get eight hours a month for paid sick leave. And unused sick leave benefits are allowed to accumulate indefinitely. Absence due to the employee or the family member being sick is one reason to use the sick leave. Family members are spouse, domestic partner, blood relative of the of the self, or the blood relative of the spouse or the domestic partner, or someone whose voice, or someone whose close association is equivalent to a family relationship. So that sounds like a pretty good way of covering, that could be added to the employees manual for somebody, I'm sorry, my throat, for somebody to be off for sick leave while they're, after having a baby or an adoption, rather than paying them on a special, you know, adding something to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
My name is Kim Jorgensen-Gane. I've lived on the corner of Elmen, Maine, so that first block of downtown for over 10 years now. I, I'm here early because I have another event and I can't stay. But I wanted to re-up my comments from the last meeting in support of both paid leave and in support in general of commissioners' attempt at doing something about parking versus continuing to kick the can down the road for decades.
And we do have parking on the agenda, so.
But I can't stay.
Okay.
So I just want to say that I've raised two generations of kids, mostly here. We've left and come back. I have four grown kids now, millennials, two daughters, and Gen Z, two boys, my son and nephew. No, none of my four children want to live here. And that breaks my heart. I have left and returned three times to this community. Once, you know, I was a child. I didn't have any choices in that, but twice as an adult. And I keep coming back because I want to make this place better. I want us to grow because if we don't, we will die. And we are losing population. We suffer from having so many second homeowners, which God love them, if they can afford it, it's wonderful, but they don't spend their dollars here. In our super, I just have been traveling for the last month. I've been in Detroit, in Cleveland, and I was in Pennsylvania. And then I was in for the last 10 days. I came back early for this meeting. For the last 10 days, I was in Chattanooga. We are a rural, small town. We have empty store shelves. In none of those places that I have visited, other than Pennsylvania, because it was very rural where I was, do they have empty store shelves? Bigger cities have fully stocked store shelves. We wouldn't know that if all we are is here, because we don't see it. I stopped selling real estate in this community because there was no inventory, and it was really cutthroat and really ugly. And I didn't have the stomach for it, because I was raising two boys. Our nephew had just come to live with us. Anyways, yet again, I support paid leave because that's the community I want us to be. I want our city to be a city where people of all stripes can afford to live.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other public comment?
Please.
Yes, hi, I'm Jimmy Fostigi. I live down on Lyons Park Drive. And I have two inquiries for the commission. There is no speed limit posted on Lyons Park Drive. And it becomes a racetrack on occasion down there, especially, you know, when people are going to the beach and that nice straight stretch that goes from the fountain to Park Street. And it's just dangerous. There are children there, there are people with pets. And it's, we really need to have a speed limit posted down there. My second inquiry is about what is the policy for bicycles and skateboards? Because they seem to go wherever they'd like to go, but there's no regulation of any kind. I see skateboarders in the middle of the street. I see them on sidewalks. Have nothing against skateboarders, but they're not really vehicles, or are they? Also, for bicycles, what's the definition? Is a bicycle a vehicle? Or is it a pedestrian on a bicycle? Because I've seen bikers sometimes stop at stop signs, sometimes stop at lights, and then sometimes not do that. So there doesn't seem to be any regulation, and it's very dangerous with a lot of skateboarders. They seem to just go right into crosswalks, assuming someone's going to stop for them. And so I think there needs to be, if there isn't, I don't know if the state has regulation, the county or whatever, but regarding bicycles and skateboarders, we need to know what the rules are because there seems to be no regulation at this point. So that's all.
Thank you. Thank you. Other public comment?
My name is Neil Bernosco. I live at 1510 Bernice Avenue, St. Joseph. I would like the City Commission to get together with the St. Joseph Public Schools to find a better way for parents to be dropping off their kids and picking them up at Lincoln Elementary School. The cars are backed up onto Langley. And since the restructuring of Langley, it's, you got to sit there and wait, you know, when you're heading, when you're heading south on Langley, these cars are backed up. It's not safe. And there's got, St. Joseph Public Schools have to come up with a better way for parents to pick up their kids and drop them off. Maybe Orchard Lane, but the way they're doing now, I can't remember the, I don't know the name of the street that they're backed up on, but it's at the front of the school there. And it's a hazard. It's a real hazard. And we need to do something with the schools to alleviate that problem.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, oh, we got one? Okay.
Steve Spielman, I live on Lyons Park Drive. And it's a travesty to say if there is a street sweeper that the city owns, it sure hasn't been out this whole year. Sand is a huge issue still, just huge issue. I spend hours moving sand. And I'm telling you, it's not blowing back right now. They didn't do the job. They did a half-assed job. And, you know, let alone Lyons Park, the sand, the limbs, you name it. If not for one of our neighbors that picks up the trash, hell, it would really be bad. So maybe you'll find some time, or a streets person will find some time to take care of this.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Do you speak on parking now or later?
Later. Okay. Sir, are you trying to make another public comment?
Yeah.
Each person just gets one.
Well, I just wanted to comment on his.
Well, we only have time for everyone to have one public comment.
Well, when I.
You can email us. Can let us know.
The street sweeper used to come by weekly, and now it doesn't. He wants me to come by once a month.
Any other public comment? Yes. If you have a comment that's something on the consent or.
Yeah.
Yep.
And if you. What it is, is for I don't know how many years.
And can we get your name and address, please?
No, it's Cindy. There are a set of stairs and a, what do you call it, a ramp right across from the Whitcomb. And it goes down along the railroad tracks, down by, going down Silver Beach. Okay, there have been stairs broke there forever. And it's dangerous, and there's no maintenance whatsoever going on as far as leaves, debris, everything on both sides. But the worst is this section of stairs that someone can get hurt of. I've never brought it up, and I go there every day with this lady that has macular. So I thought, this is the time. I need to tell you about those stairs, because I don't know who to tell. And and that whole area is like, it's forgotten. And the city actually, in whole, needs a lot more, yeah.
That's why I was raising money.
There are so many potholes. The potholes are dangerous. Come out of Cafe Tosi and see if you can turn your ankle there. And there's a lot of other places, real deep, deep holes. So anyway.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Other public comment? All right, seeing none, we will move along to the consent agenda. That includes the regular meeting minutes of Monday, May 12, 2025, invoice and tax disbursements, and 2027 Main Street Reconstruction Project Revised TAP Grant Resolution. What is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. All right, Abby, call the roll. Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sirola?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Okay, item number nine, old business, Resolution 2025 Appropriations Ordinance, second reading.
Yeah. Okay, so this is the second reading ordinance, and so this is the fourth meeting enroll we've talked about next year's budget. We started out by talking about what each funds are, what they do. We reviewed the capital requests for projects. Then we talked about a draft of each fund and where it all is fund balance. And then last time, we had the public hearing. We approved the budget itself. We approved the capital improvement list, and we had the first reading ordinance. So I just want to read real quick the ordinances again, or the millages again. For the general, general fund, 14.79 mils.
Do you speak up? I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. Yep, sorry.
Thank you.
For the general fund, 14.79 mils. The library is 0.7656. The band fund is 0.2500. The rubbish fund is 1.9155. The airport is 0.2442. The CSO debt fund is 0.5000, and then DDA is 1.9235. Those haven't changed. They're the same as last time. And Emily, you can go to, real quick, we'll touch on a couple slides, same presentation we saw last time. I just want to revisit a couple of things real quick. This slide here with that gray box. So this slide is representation of where your taxes go. This is last year's tax information, the actual distributions we made at the time of settlement with the county. The gray box there is what stays in the city, which is 39.2% of last year's taxes. Everything else, we paid out to other governmental entities. And then Emily, you can go to the next slide. These are the millages compared to last year. And if you remember, last time we talked, we are reducing some by choice, some because of Headley. The general fund is not changing, it's staying the same. The library is being reduced because of Headley. The band fund is not changing, staying the same. The rubbish is being reduced because of our choice to match the expected expense. The airport is being reduced because of Headley. The debt service is being reduced to match the expected service because we lost that loan. We're down to one. And then the DDA is also reduced because of Headley. And then Emily, the last, the project size, last one, I just want to touch on real quick. These are, again, are the top 20 projects. And when we think about expenses in city, these are what we have going on. And if we think about the water revenues, if you remember, CSO is because of the sewer fund in the city is because of the CSO project. The city water fund is because of lead service. Those are the driving factors, and then these are the projects from last time.
Okay.
Does it? Okay. All right, that's the presentation. Any questions from the commission?
No, it was very thorough last time.
All right, thank you. What's the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve the following resolutions, setting the 2025 millage rates to be levied on real property and personal property within the City of St. Joseph, giving a second reading to the Appropriations Ordinance as presented.
Support. Any public comment on the matter?
I can use that loan?
If you have questions or public comment, would you please come up to the podium? Okay, thank you. All right.
We paid it off.
Good thing. Abby, call the roll. Commissioner Sirola?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
All right, thanks, Ben. On to item number 10, Articles of Incorporation Medic One.
Just Articles of Incorporation, Community Emergency Services is Medic One, a community-owned ambulance service that runs out of our area. Many of the items in the Articles of Incorporation were placed in the new bylaws, which I brought before this board last year. I'll bring up just three changes that were made to the Articles of Incorporation. Number one, under Article Three, is additional municipalities may become part of Medic upon the municipality's approval. Upon application, the board will make unanimous approval by the governing bodies. Another change is in Article Four, Section C. Any trustee may be removed by its appointing governing body at will or by affirmative vote of two-thirds majority of the total number of trustees that sit on the board at Medic One. And then Article Four, a withdrawn municipality shall have no further interest in the assets of Medic One and shall be responsible for any liabilities or debt incurred after that date. So we need the commission to approve the Articles of Incorporation of Medic One.
Okay, any questions or comments from the commission? What is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve the amendment and authorize adoption of the new Articles of Incorporation of Community, commonly known as Medic One.
Support.
Any public comment on the matter? All right, Abby, call the roll. Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sirola?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
On to item number 11, Padler Park. On to item number 11, Paddler Park.
City staff and the Parks Board have been working for some time to develop detailed plans for, or master plans for all of our parks to be kind of guiding documents for future, future residents, future staff, uh, so they have some, some guidance in how the park is to be developed in the future. We've been working on a master plan since December of 2022 for Paddler Park, uh, which is the newest addition to our park system. Uh, we, we began the process in July of 2022 by issuing an RFP for, um, design assistance from OCBA out of Kalamazoo. Uh, we went through a public engagement process, uh, had several revisions to the plan. And then finally, on January 11th, 2024, the Parks and Recreation Board, made a motion to recommend the city commission adopt the Paddler Park Master Plan as presented. Shortly after that January 11th meeting, uh, city staff became aware there were very early development concepts for nearby private property that could potentially require coordination with plans for the park development. Staff understood it was likely to be several months before private development plans would be ready to officially bring to the city. Thus, staff deferred consideration of the park plan to have an opportunity to talk with the developer to gain an understanding of their concepts and make any adjustments as needed. Since December of 2024, the Parks Board has been working with Chris Cook, Managing Director of Harbor Shores Development and his devised plan for Paddler Park. Harbor Shores owns the adjacent property known as parcel two and are planning to begin developing that parcel in the coming year. As part of that development, they'd like to partner with the city in a coordinated effort to develop the park. Harbor Shores presented a plan for Paddler Park that included the amenities that were in the original plan adopted by the Parks Board in January of 2024. With the addition of a restroom slash storage building in place of the Portageon, additional docks for boats and increased parking utilizing the Upton Drive right of way. Harbor Shores has offered to fund the development of the park. The city plans to apply for a grant through the Michigan Department of Natural Resources and Harbor Shores will serve as the match for the project. Uh, the plan for Paddler Park is otherwise currently unfunded. So after several revisions and working with Harbor Shores and their design team, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board voted to recommend the city commission adopt the Paddler Park Master Plan as presented at their May 8th, 2025 meeting and recommend the city commissioner, commission enter into an agreement with Harbor Shores Development for the development of Paddler Park and request that the agreement will protect public access to the park and all future amenities developed on the site.
All right, thank you. How about any questions or comments from the commission on this master plan?
No, I think it's wonderful that Harbor Shores has offered to fund the development of the park.
And I know that the Parks Board put a lot of time, you know, even before they knew about this, you know, the, the new development at Harbor Shores, they were pouring their hearts into the part Paddler Park plan and they, they really did a good job of partnering with, you know, Harbor Shores to develop what is, is before us today. So I know this is the result of a lot of, you know, partnership and, and working together. And I think it looks wonderful and, and as Greg notes, um, were it not for this, you know, public, private partnership, uh, this is a project that, you know, is a great idea, but something that would have gone unfunded. So it's a great way to make something real.
Yeah, I think kudos, Chris, to you and your team as well. I know there were concerns from, initial concerns from the Parks Department. And so I, I apologize, Parks Board. I appreciate you taking that into concern, I think into consideration. I think everyone's happy with this. I know I'm excited for another place to launch a kayak.
Chris, will this be a state or federal grant that you're pursuing?
State.
State. Which agency? Just curious. DNR, okay.
It'd likely be similar to the ones we've had previously, probably Land and Water Conservation Fund, which is federally provided, but administered by the state.
Gotcha.
Anything else you wanted to add, Chris, or even someone from Parks Board or anything like that?
So I, I think just a couple of things. First of all, thanks to Greg and the Parks Board for reaching out to us a year or so ago and coordinating with us. And it was a pleasure to work with the Parks Board through the process. Uh, there was mentioned that they went through a very painstaking process and very, um, very detailed process and they take their jobs very seriously in making sure the parks in St. Joseph are the best they can be. So we really appreciated working with them through that. Think we've added value to the site and to the site plan, yet provided everything that they wanted. And so we just look forward to partnering with the city to make this happen. So thank you.
Great, thank you for your partnership. All right. Any other questions or comments? We can move to a vote. What's the pleasure of the commission?
I move to adopt the Paddler Park Master Plan as presented and provide staff with direction to prepare a grant application and develop element of Paddler Park that will protect public access to the park and all the future amenities developed in the park.
Support. Any public comment on the matter? All right, Abby, call the roll. Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Greg. Item number 12, Corrosion Control Study Contract Extension Amendment Number Two.
Okay, the Corrosion Control Treatment Study currently underway at the water plant was approved by the city commission back in 2020. It consists of four components, uh, lead pipe scale analysis, a desktop study, analogous system study and a pipe loop study. Um, the pipe loop study is ongoing. Back in December, uh, we received your approval to extend the study and look at the seasonal effects of an orthophosphate corrosion inhibitor on lead pipe. The lead pipe test rigs are at the water plant. The, the lead pipe is, was harvested from homes on Lake Shore Drive in St. Joseph. We are encouraged by the results, they can, they continue to be stable. The lead levels are dropping. However, in January, staff observed that, uh, there was a buildup of a precipitate on the glass, uh, on the rigs. The glass rotometers which adjust flow. So we'd like to continue the study another few months from July to October and look at reducing that dose and maybe changing one of the rigs over to, uh, chemical, uh, orthophosphate, um, in, um, instead of or in, in addition to the ortho that's being added on the other rigs. So we're looking at amendment two at this point in the amount of $26,720 for that four months of additional study.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission?
Nope, nothing.
I don't think so.
All right, what is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve the Corrosion Control Contract Amendment Two to the 2022 agreement from Cornwell Engineering of Newport News, Virginia in the amount of $26,720 for extended study through October 2025 for the purpose of evaluating the effectiveness of corrosion control, which will increase the contract fee from $212,460 to $239,180. Funds are available in the 2025-2026 water fund budget.
Support.
All right, any public comment on the matter? Sure. If you could come up.
Might not be for this meeting, but with all the people going on about fluoride.
Can you state your name and address for the public comment?
In the form of Street Fifty Lakes Street. I think sometimes we would maybe update everyone about people's concerns about it. I feel quite humble with it, but I hear comments about the concerns of fluoride is.
Sure, will do. Yes.
Any other public comment? Please.
Sorry, I'm just trying to understand this Corrosion Study. It's with the.
Can we get your name and address, please? Thank you.
That corner is eight twenty eight Lions Park Drive. So the corrosion study, you were mentioning that you were going to add some type of phosphate or some type of multiplier into our water or?
It, it's an orthophosphate, um, and it has an effect where it reduces the solubility of lead on the pipe.
But, but that, just to clarify, this is an experiment that is being done at the water plant. This is not about adding something to our drinking water, if that's what you're asking.
That's what I wanted to get clarification on.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So you're, you're just, you're experimenting that within your, your own infrastructure of the water plant itself and not being dispersed.
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Okay. Thank you.
Actually, it's just test piping. It's not even within the water plant.
Oh, it's just.
That, that comes out to the water plant. It's just, uh, piping that was harvested and now we're testing it to see how effective these measures are for the future.
Okay, all right, good, thank you. Cause I, I want to.
Other questions or public comments? All right, we had a motion in a second. Abby, call the roll. Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
All right, item number 13, downtown parking program update. All right. As part of the committee, oh, computer's still updating, so I'll just read it right from my phone. As everyone knows, our new downtown parking program went into effect on May 15th. We are currently 13 day parking program. We have started to learn immediately and we've made quick changes. Some of these include adding a number of 30 minute parking spaces, including two in front of the Whitcomb. We ensure that all of the on-street spaces on Broad Church and Ship remained all day parking. Significantly improved signage, including adding additional signs for more clarity. We added signs, uh, to clearly indicate where free all-day parking was located. And we added signs to help point out the locations of the pay stations. Stopping and forcing, um, occurred until we felt that the signage was a lot more clear. And we also dismissed and refunded any tickets issued prior to improving the signage. We also increased presence in the downtown ambassadors program and added a pay early feature that allows users to pay in advance of the 9:00 AM. During yesterday's parking subgroup meeting, the group aligned on the following changes. Delay, delaying this program until the start of the Friday before Memorial Day going forward. As the weather in early May, uh, we've seen over the past week that is very unpredictable. Um, and we should not have paid parking prior to that time. We are going to also add more time options to the pay stations and on the app so that users can choose a more accurate timeframe for their trip downtown. We will plan to allow users to pay in 15 minute increments, up to an hour and 30 minute increments beyond that. The main goal of the parking program was to decrease congestion on the west side and incentivize parkers to use the east side of Main Street to increase turnover. We are seeing that the parking program has succeeded in moving a number of downtown parkers over to our previously underutilized free parking spaces. Downtown employees account for as many to two, of 200 to over 450 employees per shift. Freeing up high demand parking on the west side will benefit businesses and visitors in the long run. The committee appreciates all of the constructive suggestions and updates and we will continue to receive and review these and make necessary tweaks as the program moves forward. Any questions or comments from the commission on this topic?
I guess, um, the only thing I would, you know, add to that, you know, is that ultimately we're motivated to see the city improve. And when I look at the downtown, its current state is evidence of how desperately we need to focus on its improvement. The last new building development that downtown saw was City Hall in 1997. And for decades, we've seen deferred maintenance on our roads and other assets. Space going unused in the very streets that we're driving on to in varying levels of decay. We need to stop being satisfied with the way things were and invest in making things better than they were before. That's not our only challenge. We've got a lot of complex rules that make any change slow and painful. For instance, too much time is spent complying with overly complex sign ordinances. We, we need sweeping reform and our ordinances to allow for our businesses to have the flexibility to grow and attract their customers. We need to enable their creativity, not hinder it with regulations that mandate how many signs they can have. We have to revise residential restrictions to let homeowners create additional housing and adapt to their evolving family needs. We need to embrace and seek out more projects like the lookout point expansion to bring more full-time residents to our city. This city once housed nearly 12,000 people and recent decades have seen population decline, deferred maintenance and a housing shortage. Reinvesting in downtown development and the development in general in our city is the key to reversing that pattern. And in order to remain a thriving year-round community with a vibrant economy, we must make it easier to create our own abundance. While paid parking doesn't create funding or it doesn't create housing or it fund all of our infrastructure needs, it is consistent with the idea of reinvesting in our downtown. A city is like a living organism and continued investment and growth leads to its health, while stagnation leads to decline. Therefore, making redevelopment easier through a major overhaul of our zoning practices is what is critical to ensure a healthy city. Now, coming back to paid parking, we're about two weeks into this change, as the mayor said. And with any new system of this scale, we are encountering those learnings and technical difficulties. And I've heard feedback about early payment issues and we're focused on learning from those errors to prevent them in the future. We are getting a lot of valuable feedback and I understand how important this issue of parking is to our year-round residents who want to enjoy their own city. And while this change is meant to alleviate congestion and make it easier for you to downtown, I acknowledge the frustration that you feel with any new fee. Nobody likes to pay more than what they used to. However, the costs to maintain our city assets and provide services are significant, which is precisely why our city needs to focus on growth and a way forward, not maintaining the same practices of yesterday. To our downtown employees, you are not expected to pay to work. It is vital that you always have access to free parking. I know that you are concerned that this seasonal approach means an adjustment to your commute. And in speaking with some of you and several of your employers over the first few weeks, it's clear that we need to ensure that you can get to work as easily and safely as possible. And I believe there is room for adjustments to address many of your concerns as we've heard some adjustments, uh, from the parking subgroup. And we also have residents who live downtown without access to private parking who rely fully on public parking. Even before the rollout, we created a waiver for them and we must continue our dialogue with those residents to make sure that we are monitoring the success of the waivers and make the adequate adjustments to ensure that the program effectively addresses their needs. We are committed to adapting quickly to make this system the best possible fit for our community. And having moved on from, from the project's inception to its implementation, we're now in the rollout and adjustment phase. The parking subgroup plays a vital role in advising the city commission on potential adjustments. To effectively identify these adjustments, key learnings and implementation effects, I believe we need to expand our core working group to incorporate some more direct feedback, specifically from some new voices that can help gather concerns and new ideas from their teams. Therefore, I'd like to propose that we rotate a commissioner on the parking subgroup and add new members to the group itself at its next meeting. This is an important step, I feel, to ensure that we are incorporating the feedback of all the groups impacted by this change, acknowledging the community input that we have already received. I know that the parking subgroup has prepared those adjustments that Mayor Thomas mentioned and I think that is a step in the right direction. But I'd like to propose these changes.
Okay.
Could you just reiterate specifically what you want changed?
I would like just a, a new face on the parking subgroup. I, I think a rotation, um, you know, to end the, an expansion of the parking subgroup to add new members to it, to make sure that we're encapsulating additional feedback. So my proposal is that one of, we, we currently have two of us, five on the parking subgroup. I would like to propose that we rotate one of our two existing members with one of the three that is not currently on that body. And at that next parking subgroup meeting, um, identify new additions that that group can add.
Okay, so switching out one of the commissioners, but then adding to people to the subcommittee, so two.
At the next, correct.
Right, right.
Yeah, cause I, I think it's important as we diversify those voices in the parking subgroup. I think, um, I want to honor and recognize the work that the parking subgroup has done this far and all of the research that has happened. But I think that there's an opportunity to bring a new voice into that conversation. I think bringing two, two new voices in, um, and I believe that there should be a resident representative in there.
Well, I'm willing to step aside because I know how much work it is to be in the parking group and I've been in it for over a year and I spend hours every week on it. And I know I'm not going to be here, I'm going to be off and on this summer and I think it needs to be somebody that's committed to being able to be here all the time because I've spent a lot of, a lot of my time on it. So I'm willing to step back and let somebody else, uh, take my spot on.
I'm willing to volunteer.
We have someone stepping off, a volunteer, any other, you want to arm wrestle for it? Anyone else really want to be on it?
Nope.
Brooke, I, I, Brooke, I do believe there's value in having the mayor's voice on it. And so I think that, I think it makes a lot of sense to keep you on it. In the event you are not able to make a meeting or I, I also know how much work the parking subgroup takes. So thanks for jumping in there. Commissioner Fernandez, I'm happy to, I'm happy to step in.
Okay, so I think we're. Okay, so I think we're all in agreement that we're going to have Michael step in, remove Michelle effective today.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know if. And Tess is a backup for when we need you. Great.
Yeah, I'd like to add to that. And this will be up to the DDA, but I think there are two people through attrition that are leaving the DDA board. And so there'll be two new appointees there. But I would like the DDA to consider expanding their board from nine to eleven. In that paid parking, the idea of paid parking in downtown St. Joe actually originated with the DDA. They brought it to the city commission. I've gotten the sense from business owners that they don't feel like perhaps the the existing group on the DDA had a pulse of what the rest of the business owners felt. So I think the 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 replacement of two. The replacement of two is one step, but I think expanding by two more and going to eleven. Again, this is something the DDA will need to decide. The commission doesn't direct the DDA. But I I would ask the DDA to consider expanding their board to eleven to get more voices.
Now, procedurally, I'm curious how that would look as far as.
The city commission actually appoints members to the DDA, and it can have up to twelve members. So it is a city commission appointment. It makes sense if you want the DDA to discuss that. And there are statutory requirements that they have, that the members have an interest in the downtown.
Yep. I'd I'd like to revise the recommendation from eleven to twelve. I didn't realize that that was the limit, so.
And the bylaws.
I think more voices is always better, the broader the group, the better.
So bylaws currently say nine, so I think there is another, that is something the DDA would need to to update the bylaws to reflect twelve.
In the meantime.
A lot of the business owners can't attend meetings, so this way then there can be representation. But I do not want to diminish the work that the DDA has done. They have poured their heart and soul into this, and you may think that they didn't consider you, but they certainly care about the city of St. Joseph. And whatever they did, they thought they were doing for the best, so. I'm not going to diminish what what the work that they put into it, but I do think some new voices will be appreciated.
And while we're kind of discussing bylaws and structure, I am curious about the parking subgroup as a structure. Obviously, here we've recommended to move our commissioners. We want some new voices on that. And am I correct in thinking that there's not? We are not working within bylaws for this, or how could you just help me understand?
There's no bylaws for the parking subgroup. We went back and Lori really went back and took a look at the minutes when it was formed in March of twenty twenty-two at a special meeting where the commission and the DDA met and decided to create the parking subgroup with two members of the commission and three to four members of the DDA. That is, in both cases, based on what a quorum, you know, how we prevent a quorum. So if the DDA were to grow, I think the seats at that parking subgroup could grow along with it. I think it's really just guidance from the city commission in order to make that change.
Could I give guidance to the parking subgroup now about something I would like to see for the next meeting? The same way we do for the planning commission and everybody else? That is okay, yeah. One thing that keeps coming up in all of these conversations that we're having, of course, with business owners, but as as commissioners, we're elected to represent our constituents who are all over the city of St. Joseph. I would really, really value seeing some feedback and some real numbers from the parking subgroup about what a residential parking pass would look like. We, from my very limited knowledge of the system, we have that infrastructure here in place, the way that we register our vehicles for the parks. Again, I am not an expert in the system. There may be more reasons behind that. But I'm bringing it up now because it's something that I would like to discuss as a city, as as commissioners. I think that while the revenues of paid parking, of course, are valuable, we just saw all of those numbers flash up. The city needs money. The reality is, a lot of that is already coming from the taxpayers here in St. Joseph. And so I would like to see really what that would look like if we consider the residents in in that.
And we have considered that, so they do have that information. So if you if you want to go to a parking subgroup committee and ask, you know, to talk about some of that stuff, you can.
I think it's valuable to bring up now, though, because, like we said, we're, you know, we're we're ten percent of the way into this, in into this. Sentiments will change, and we have to adapt to it. That's why we created this in a resolution format. So I think it's important for us all to all to talk about it, the feasibility of that. Because I just, I see the resident concern as top priority for me.
Yes, I think that is absolutely something you can direct the parking subgroup. I think that's absolutely something you can direct the parking subgroup to look at.
Okay.
No issue there.
Great. Other thoughts, questions? I mean, this is not really an actionable item. It's a report, so.
We don't need a motion for any of the changes, and we just agree, then I think I'm personally good.
Okay, wonderful. No direction. We will take public comment on the matter, so we can start that now. Again, just remind yourself, you're going first. Okay. Come to the podium, name, address. I will do the three-minute timer. Thank you.
I rushed up here because I need to head to Madison tonight to see my daughter inducted into the bar tomorrow, so.
Congratulations.
That will be a big day for her. So I just wanted to say that I am so happy and thankful for your leadership in this matter. It's a difficult issue. And even more than the leadership that you've taken is the nimbleness that you've shown tonight and over the last couple of weeks. And I think that you'll show us going forward as we continue to learn what works and what doesn't work and listening to people. And I personally have gone downtown a few times already on purpose to pay, to try to help make sure that this is a success. And I hope others join me in that. And again, support with what you're trying to do here, so thank you.
Thank you.
And I will leave.
All right, we got more coming up. Go ahead in the back here.
Good evening. Austin Bach, owner of Lumberjacks, Sarganack, Suring, Bound for Freedom, downtown St. Joseph, Michigan, right down there, four four State Street. And I am actually in favor of the paid parking. But the caveat is, there needs to be something, I think, consular, or just needs to be something for locals to continue to get them to come back, right? People will say, well, sales are down for terms of parking, but there's a lot of talk economically. Obviously, our sales are down, but there's a whole bunch of reasons for that. And Facebook posts and things like that have been going around that, oh, our sales are down, our sales are down. But across the board, sales are down all the way up the coast from a lot of other members, from other cities. So I do think that a revenue stream of parking is important because that group of people, a lot of people like to call the FIPS or the out-of-towners, if you will, they do come in, pay money to our businesses. And they are coming, planning their vacations here, not based off of parking. And a two-dollar, whatever ticket that they have to pay to park is not hindering them from paying their fourteen, fifteen, twenty-dollar parking abroad, right? Or in Chicago or wherever they're coming from, right? And so I do think, though, that the window has been shrunk already. I think that window from end of Memorial Day to Labor Day needs to be tight. I don't think that our our locals need to be punished for them not coming in. But as an owner, and my last statement is most important, is I've worked downtown for ten. We opened in two thousand twelve, two thousand fourteen, worked down there for about ten years. I can count on my hands how many locals actually come down and shop. Now, using the amenities like the bluff and walking and doing all those kinds of things is a different story, or going to farmers market. So those types of options might be something we need to look into. But locals coming in and shopping with their families, maybe like visitors, they bring their visitors downtown. But do they come in regularly and shop on a consistent basis, weekly during the summertime? No, the number one thing is, oh, it's too busy for us to, you know. And so if we're trying to alleviate the parking, right? If we're trying to alleviate the, trying to get more turnover, there might be a bigger opportunity for people to come in and get those spaces quicker because they're not being occupied. That's things I've seen, working down there for ten years, right? Sitting at the counter going, oh, I haven't seen you guys all summer. Where you been? Oh, we don't come downtown because there's no parking available. So it has been an issue, and I'm glad that you guys are trying to address that issue. And we hopefully can work together to bring some resolution, obviously, to bring more locals down and to not hurt employee employees. We luckily have three spaces behind our store that our employees can rotate in through and back out and stuff. That's not the case for all the other businesses. And so I do think that, I mean, it's a long three minutes. I do think that I do think that employees need to be honored as well.
There it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being brave.
Okay, other public comment, please. You'll be next.
I gotta go quick because my husband's got dinner in ten minutes. My name is Sandra Podolak. I live at nine one two Plaza Street, which you practically see from here. Moved here two and a half years ago because my husband from Chicago wanted to move here. I grew here. I grew up here in Michigan. This has been the most unkind city I've ever been in. I've lived all across the U.S. The parking is the final straw. My mom lives at Whitcomb. They, my mom has vascular dementia. She's wheelchair-bound. She can't feed herself. We, as a family, go once every day to make sure she's fed. Whitcomb says you got two hours for family and visitors, whatever, DTs, OTs. Two hours is not enough. My mom, we try to get her to play bingo Mondays and Wednesdays. My sister from Hartford comes in at ten and is there until six. My mom is ninety-four. Obviously, her kids are not that young. She has to park way over here by wherever the free parking is, go across four lanes. She's had foot surgery, or she can pay to park. Whitcomb's two hours is all that we're allowed. My sister comes in from Bridgman. My other friend comes in from South St. Joe. I cannot believe that you didn't think about the Whitcomb.
Two hours of Whitcomb.
My mom pays almost, we pay seven thousand dollars a month. And my husband told, had the nerve to tell me as I flew into South Bend today. Oh, it's just a little more, twelve dollars a day, fifteen. Y'all are going to nickel and dime us to death. The moment my mom passes, I leave this city. It's been unkind. I just, I can't believe it. Nickel and dime us to death. We don't have an option. We do have an option. We could abandon our mom at the Whitcomb. She can't feed herself. She's in a wheelchair. We could just get up and go, which I will do when she passes. Two and a half years I've been living here, and each day it gets worse. I go to those shops all the time down there. I go to the market, I buy my wine there. I go over and do the classes at the baking place. I go over there, I go up and down there. I go to the dime store. I am up there all the time looking for stuff for my mom, clothes for my mom. I shop there all the time. I don't know what this guy's talking about. I walk over there. But when season ends, I'm not gonna, I I think the retailers, I'm going to call you guys collateral damage because my, I'm not going to park there. Y'all treat me like this for my mom. Forget it.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hello, I'm Liv Sansoni. My address is twelve twelve Miami Road. St. Joseph Charter Township, but it's actually a Benton Harbor address. And the reason I came to the meeting today is because I'm constantly in in the town, and I love it. Made a lot of friends. But the reason I wanted to come was to let you know that I know a lot of people that live in Stevensville, Benton Harbor, Plainfield, that come on a very regular basis to St. Joe for their coffee, to meet with their friends, to have breakfast three or four, five times a week. And they're not, they're not going to be coming anymore because they love St. Joe, they love coming, they love spending time here, having breakfast and lunch. I also used to work in town, and I still come to support the beach. We have, you know, we pay our gas every summer because we really love it and enjoy it. But you're going to lose a lot of customers, paying customers from areas around St. Joe that come, like I said, and I'm going to repeat it again, three or four or five times a week. And they can no longer come because, one, they can't afford it to pay the parking. And Main Street, crossing Main Street, it's scary for me. I can't imagine how a lot of seniors feel crossing Main Street. And I'm talking about surrounding areas of St. Joe that do support the businesses on a regular basis. You're going to lose a lot of those customers, you know, and it's sad. It's sad when I heard a lot of people say, well, I'm going to go somewhere else to eat breakfast or lunch where I don't have to pay for parking, and I can't walk across Main Street. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you.
Jim Jesky, St. Joe, seventy-nine years old. I've been here my whole life. You know, I really wonder, people sitting up here, you hear this stuff, but you don't listen. That poor, that poor lady. That poor lady, that poor lady almost cried her heart out about St. Joe. This is a wonderful place, but boy, the leadership. You know, I'm seventy-nine. I've been here a long time. I know St. Joe. There's people sitting up here, been here five, ten years. They got all the answers. Paid parking doesn't solve it. It just doesn't solve it. And you know, I've talked to about five people, and all the answers are it's money. It's tax money. Pay to go do business. Pay to go do business. You know, I'm I'm thinking, I told my relatives sitting back here, don't say that. I'm going to say it. There's a movie, Cool Hand Luke, if you ever watched it. He was sawing off parking meters, and he went to prison. And I'm thinking to myself, you know what? I could answer for him. Why, why did you saw off those parking meters? Here's the answer. Because residents don't get to park free. That's why. I, there's no reason you got all the fancy letters, verbs, adjectives. Residents should be able to park free. I pay six thousand dollars of money. Six thousand dollars of money, and I gotta go pay to park. I can walk. I go to the Whitcomb. You got, that lady told you all about her mother. God, when are, when are you going to start thinking residents are more important than tourists? God, it's it's just incredible, you know, you tell you, and you tell you, it was CVS. People didn't want CVS. To Scornia Beach, everything that's important, that means something to people of St. Joe, you got to fight for. God, my relative, he put in for an ambassador. You know what? He probably didn't get it because he put my name down for reference. That's why he didn't get hired. God, I, you know, I just, I just dread this kind of stuff. I talked to Tim Zepel. He kind of agreed with me, but I know he can't say much. He's got to be quiet. He works here. And he does a great job, by the way. And John Hodgson did a great job. And we always worry about money, you know, we need more money. Hey, why don't, why don't we have a little guts and quit paying Frank Walsh eighty thousand the rest of his life? Quit paying. Just quit paying him. See what happens. Go to court, fight it. You got all good lawyers. Don't pay him anymore. Eighty thousand a year, multiply that to what, fifteen years he's got, been gone? Think he'll be in great shape. And by the way, if you get a chance, watch Cool Hand Luke. It's a really good movie.
Next public comment?
Hi, my name's Todd Adams. I live on Margaret Place. And I just, maybe a follow-up to your comment about money. I would like this commission, since all this new parking is coming here now, to pass an ordinance resolution that bars the sale of any of the parking meter or situation in the future where discounting or leasing can't be sold because of an overzealous commission wanting more, a big chunk of money for a project. I think that happened in the city of Chicago, and I don't think it's worked out well for them. They got a nice outlay of cash upfront. And the company that owns it. Um, and the company that owns it is making money hand over foot. And Chicago is paying $20 million a year for spaces they take up for construction. So I'd like to see this commission do something so that doesn't happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Please. We got someone in the back coming up. We've got.
Hello, my name's Kathy Christensen. I'm at 553 Chapin Boulevard. I was waiting to hear if anybody brought any of these things up, but, um, I, um, have noticed there's not a lot of parking around the library. That's not paid. I think that should be addressed, especially for students that would maybe be using the library at night or moms with small children, um, or really anyone using the library. I don't think that residents at least should have to pay to go to the library. So I appreciate the Councilwoman's suggestion that residents get free parking through the existing, um, structure for applying for beach parking. I think that just makes sense, especially for around the library. Um, second thing is I am a member of the municipal band and I know that draws a lot of people on Sundays. I am concerned about the parking on Sundays for the concerts. I know a lot of people cannot cross that street who are elderly who go to those concerts. We have a great, great many number of elderly people who attend our concerts. And I know it's, it's a small price, but I, I would also rather not have to pay when I've spent the whole day practicing for the concert and playing for the concert. I would rather not have to pay parking to play the concert, 13 concerts a season. So that will add up. So I think that should also be addressed for municipal band members. Um, I guess in closing, I would say I have started out living here, um, having a, um, property 14 years ago as a part-time resident. Um, I'm now a full-time resident. I have been for four years. And I have lived, you know, very many different places, including Chicago suburbs in a quite, active community with a nice downtown like this, lots of parking, didn't charge a dime for it. So I am concerned about the businesses and the impact on their parking. Um, the parking is going to have on their revenues because I came from a place previously that had very thriving downtown, similar to this with restaurants and shops, very unique shops, very similar and, um, plenty of parking and which was managed. And they also had a parking structure. So, so this parking subgroup, I would really encourage an active participation in discussion in building a parking structure somewhere close to downtown that people could use for free. And perhaps maybe if you would say all of this parking revenue is gonna go towards building a parking structure and then you do away with the parking revenue, that might make sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
You responded it.
Should be able to.
I'm Nancy from Revive Spa, 313 Main Street. Your big orange building, your big orange wall right there. Let me say that my '23 and '24 sales were very similar and that my sales in April were up. Okay? The first 10 business days, my 10 business days of this screw St. Joe, I am down 41%. I can't pay my mortgage for the first time in 11 years. 23 less massages, $1,600 my therapist lost. How long do you think they're gonna stay with me making 40% less? When my massages are gone, I'm dead. Rainy days or spa days? Nope, my phone is not ringing. Quarterly estimates are due, are due in June, $4,000. I'm gonna pull that out of my ass? All purchasing is on hold. I can't even buy flowers for the front porch. I can't repair machines that I need to be repaired. I'm calling off employees. One of them already quit. I don't need her anyways. I went from two spa consultants working a shift to one. Your policy is now destroying jobs. I'm working nine hours a day, mostly alone, when for five years I worked part-time. Boy, I'm really enjoying sliding right into retirement here. I cannot survive on this. If I get back to normal, which I doubt, I will have to rehire and retrain. Always a great time for business owners. My employees are pissed. Okay, how about everybody that works in this building? Why don't you park down in front of the box factory and haul your ass up here? Including all of you. Emily, I'm sure you're walking from your new $720,000 house.
Please keep your comments respectful and not targeted at anyone.
I'm trying, but you're lucky I'm not swearing like a sailor. I'm telling you right now. Now, you wanna, now, when you park down there, make sure you bring your lunch because you're not gonna be able to leave. Stand up all during your shift so you can feel like the rest of our peasants. Hopefully it's raining so that you look like a drowned rat when you get from work. Now you wanna, now you wanna feel like an owner? Do all of this on four hours of sleep because we ain't sleeping with a knot in your gut all day long. Okay, because you are destroying us. Oh, and by the way, fire your assistant because you can't afford her. I have two apartments above my spa and my tenants are pissed. And if I lose one of them, I am screwed. You have created division, east side versus west side, people who want this versus people who don't want this. And what about favoritism? What about this Pleasant Street Plaza? For God's sakes, COVID is over. They both have outdoor seating. Why do they get to increase their business footprint at the cost of 14 parking spots? That could be for two hour parking, eight for customers a day. And I got people circling this lot, trying to find a parking spot to pop into my spot and grab a tan for 15 minutes or spend an hour doing some of my self spa or getting a massage. There, there's no parking out here for my customers. Saturday is a complete shit show. Locals are pissed, they're not coming.
Thank you. Other public comment? Any other public comment? Please. Uh, no, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Ross. I live at, um, 2690 Paddock Circle and I opened up Yours Truly Elizabeth last July. Before that, I worked downtown at the toy company for eight years and I know the traffic and parking challenge as well. We've been told repeatedly that the paid parking program, according to Emily Hackworth, isn't being implemented for revenue, but to address the parking capacity challenges. We've also been told that the decision to do this was based on studies, data, surveys, research and planning. If this isn't being implemented for revenue, why does the program run from May 15th to September 15th, 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.? That's four full months and 12 hours a day. You originally asked her five full months from May 1st to September 30th, when there clearly isn't major congestion in May or September. Why are you charging from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. when these hours don't reflect the peak demand? I don't feel confident in what I've been told. I feel scared and I feel scared because either we have been misled or all your data, survey, planning and research is incorrect. Maybe it missed the broader impact that this is having on our community. Well, here's the reality in my store. Customers are already choosing not to come downtown and that's a fact. Since I opened, I, I have talked to one person who is for this program and she is on the DDA board. Everyone else, and I literally mean everyone else is against it. Customers bring it up all the time. I try to stay positive with them, but it doesn't matter if they are from Chicago, Marion Springs, Munster, Indiana, or Coloma. It's the same sentiment. Nobody wants it over and over and over and the city just wants their money. Seniors are really struggling with this. We have been trying to help them in the store, load the app and put on their credit cards on their phones. Um, if they park their car and there isn't an ambassador right there, they just are so confused and so frustrated. I feel really bad for them. We also don't know what metrics are being used to define success. Are you strictly basing it on meter revenue? And if not, what data are you collecting? If this fails, you don't lose your business. You don't lose your job. You're not risking your own personal money. Maybe you won't get reelected. Don't count that on my time. Maybe you won't get reelected, but for us, this is immediate and personal. It's our livelihood. It's people's jobs. If any of you owned a shop downtown, you would understand that the summer season revenue is what helps keep us open through the slower winter months so that we don't become a seasonal town, which isn't good for anybody. I know this decision wasn't made lightly and I believe you want St. Joseph to thrive too. But you also bear the responsibility of this decision. I'm asking you to please, please listen to the voices of the people who live, invest, work and visit here and be willing to reevaluate this program. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Other public comment?
My name is Wendy Baker. I live at 2346 Merrill Drive, which is in Benton Harbor, but St. Joseph Township. I work at Gina Variety. I've come here and spoken to you guys a couple of times before. And I mostly have a heart for the people who live here in this town and the customers that come into our store. And I've know, um, I was scared for the locals and how they would respond to this situation because I tried to say that they weren't responding well because I had many. Being at the front of the store, I see everything. I hear everything. Everybody comes in, had all these complaints and concerns about the parking, how they weren't gonna come back down. And then they didn't come. They haven't come back, the locals. I know who they are, so I know that they're not coming in. It's very sad. Um, it's, it's, um, it's a fun store. It's a fun place to be. It's fun to be in the environment of downtown St. Joe and I just don't feel that anymore. I don't think the people who come, who, they're not, the locals aren't even coming down anymore. There's just this anger and frustration and people are confused about the machines. They don't know how to use them right. The ambassadors are just walking circles around town. They're not there to help anybody use the machine when they need it. Um, the people, I, I've seen many customers get tickets right in front of our store and arguing, waving their arms, trying to talk about what, you know, trying to argue with somebody about getting the ticket. People, one guy came up and was arguing and he didn't even own the car. And so people are just, it wasn't even his car. And they're just very, you know, angry and frustrated and people don't wanna come down. And, uh, people like would normally think, well, maybe we'll go get a coffee at Tosi's or go get an ice cream at Kilwin's or maybe we'll, um, go buy some stuff at Gina Variety and go to the library or whatever other little thing they do. And then they think twice. They go, oh yeah, that's right. I have to pay to park down there and I have to figure out how to use the machines. It's just an added burden onto them and it inhibits them from wanting to come downtown. And people talk about not coming down. People at church, same. We're not going downtown St. Joe. People at the senior center have formed groups that say that they're not gonna come down. And then you just hear it all around and it's just gotten very sad. And, um, there's ideas that people have come up with, like having a, a one free parking day or to take things back in order to get the locals back, you know, to offer something to the locals. Um, the paid thing that she was talking about, if they, there's a pass to pay to go to the beach, there be a pass, like a downtown pass. It's just called a downtown pass. You play your right, you get your money in that kind of a way. And at least gives us freedom to be able to come down to shop.
Thank you.
My name is Phil Franzen, uh, 816 Broad Street. I, I've, I've lived here since 1971. Uh, obviously I didn't have a parking problem then. Uh, but parking in St. Joe has always been the issue. I know the city commission, the city in St. Joe has always heard about parking. That's part of taking the jobs that you guys signed up for. Changing this into a paid parking situation is just exacerbating the problem. It always has been a problem. It always will be a problem. We're a very beautiful community. People want to come here. That's the situation. It's gonna be overcrowding. You can't, Chicago people, Indiana people, Ohio people, people from the north, come down here. You don't have the room to, to do anything. I mean, it's, it's always gonna be a problem. It always has been. When I was a kid, we used to park on the beach, for God's sakes. We used to park out there and, you know, uh, anyone with gray hair remembers parking on the beach. It's always been a problem. It always will be. And you have done nothing but pour gas on the problem. You've put the fire out with gasoline. Uh, you divided the town. I don't understand why you did it. My wife works at a local restaurant and, and, you know, me, me, we, we, we rely on a lot of her income. She died this weekend. I walked to the hot dog cart guy. I used to call him the hot dog dude. He, the guy that started that cart, by the way, is a, he, he's got a Hall of Fame in St. Joe or, or in Chicago. The Kielbasa guy. I walked right into that cart. First time I've ever been able to walk up to that cart. No business. I walked up and got a Chicago dog. Didn't have to wait. On Memorial Day at 1:00 in the afternoon, I walked up to that cart and didn't have to wait. I, 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 it's never happened. Of course, it was only 65 degrees and sunny. I'm just, I'm just saying, she, she, her money was down. Everyone's money is down. I hope you listen to the concerns of the community. And I know I was a little childish with my fart comment over there. Anyway, I apologize for that. I, I do respect you. I took my hat off to come up here. Uh, but I just want you to listen to the concerns. This, it, it's, it's always going to be a problem. It always has been a problem. Making people pay for a problem is a bigger problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, everybody. Um, I haven't really been involved in the process at all because I haven't been a, a owner for a number of years. Uh, Eric Hanson, 439 Island Point. Uh, I was the owner of the Whitcomb from 2006 to 2021. Um, at the time, when I get into town, bought the property, we had a one, uh, block kind of parking area that was really underutilized. So at the time, I looked at the, uh, planning thing and the master plan in 2006 and that was the issue. Okay, one of the issues in there and you can go back to the 2016 plan and it was the same thing. So I came in, talked to Frank Walsh, sat down and I said, look, we need a parking garage. That's what we need. And, uh, so we kind of worked through that and everything like that. Fast forward to the next administration, next administration. Now we get into 2016, still need a parking garage. Okay? It's, it's a big thing to, uh, to work through. Um, I was involved in two other towns in the Chicagoland area with parking garages that completely changed their situation. So I would just suggest this is a solution, you know, and you've gotta look at that. And I know it's a ton of money. It was a ton of money back then, a lot cheaper back then. So, but, um, anyway, so consider that. I would definitely do that.
Thank you. Take your time.
I'll be quick. I don't need that because I'll blast these people out. Okay, hi, I'm with that Courtis, 828 Lyons Park Drive. And I'm just, uh, second, first emotion and second emotion in regards to the parking garage units. I brought, I was standing here over 15 years ago when they were coming up with the plans of the Carousel and the Curious Kids Down Below the Bluff. And I, and it's, it was a wonderful program when Frank Walsh was here and they were all making the announcements. And I said, this is wonderful because I had little kids back then. They had a lot more energy too. Um, but I basically said, we gotta talk about the logistics. I'm bringing the L word in, logistics. I'm like, I lived in, prior to coming back home because I was born and raised in this area, went to school right down the road. Um, go Lakers. Anyway, um, I basically, I basically said, I lived in San Francisco. I lived in LA, God forbid, help me. I lived in the, uh, I lived in Seattle. I worked for various companies. I dealt with a lot of different cities. And I said to Frank, just like the other gentleman, we got Fifth Third right here. It does not block anyone's view. I mentioned that over 15 years ago. I even knew some people in Chicago that I could say, hey, maybe we can get a parking garage unit. Holland, Michigan has one. I don't understand still why it's this day. Here it's now, what, 20, 2025, soon to be 2026. The time goes by fast that we still are, we're still dealing with this. And just think, 15 years ago, concrete and steel would have been a lot cheaper. Anyway, so thank you for all that you do. I know this has been a tough night, but everyone will figure it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Other public comment? In the back, go ahead.
I guess I'd like to say, if you guys could get on your feet, like the one lady said, if you walk around, I walk around for hours. I walk around for hours. So I see an awful lot. You see a lot more from the ground than you do when you're in your cars and just coming and going. So anyway, I've seen an awful lot, and it is bad. And I have seen, you know, I mean, people say you have single-handedly ruined the city. Now, I'm hoping everyone's wrong. I'm hoping it will change. But I'm an optimistic person. But no, I not in any way think it's working. It is not working. And the other thing is that I, I can speak for the business owners, because I owned a business in the city for 30 years. It's hard enough to have a business, much less try to think of these things where cause, you know, their employees, where they're going to park. I mean, it's hard. It's a tough road. And then the handicap spaces, I didn't have any idea that you'd be charging for them. Here is a person pulling up. I see the sign. They're handicapped, for Christ's sake. They can't find, get over, they can't even see a meter, much less should have to pay. That's why you give a handicap space, so they can get closer. That's the purpose of it. So anyway, that's one of my beefs. And then the time that the police are spending, the time that we're spending paying them, when they should be looking at criminal activity. I mean, it's not a, you're not a criminal because you want to park in the city and shop. But anyway, people are yelling at them, and there's all kinds of flack there. And then just tonight, I saw two, just before I came here. So, and then they were getting a ticket. Then also, I guess I want to find, I want to know, if we needed the money so badly, that we needed these meters, that's certainly a good reason. But where is our tax dollars going to? It's not fixing our roads. Our roads are horrendous, you know? I mean, they are bad. Just pull up some asphalt off the brick or anything. It's just all a mess. And then, let's see, what else do I, working with each business. Oh, if you could maybe just work individually with each business owner, because if you lose them, like I said, it's hard enough. They could very easily go under. And it was hard enough to keep the ones we have. People come and go, come and go. You know, the dime store's steady. There's a couple of steadies. But if you lose them, you know, so you need to work with each one of those for certain, to try and help resolve a way that they won't be discouraged, and their patrons won't be discouraged.
Thank you. Can we get, and I think you said your name earlier, but would you say it again?
My name's Cindy.
Thank you.
Cindy Hagler.
Okay.
My husband Dale.
And your address? Next public comment?
Steve Scheffler, 805 State Street, Own a Small Business, says internet-based has nothing to do with parking. Pointed border or whatever, the steps going down has a, near the bottom on the left-hand side, it has like five bricks that are raised up in a row that aren't broke, but is a tripping hazard and a huge liability.
Wait, where the, where the painting just went on? No.
Yeah, painting goes, is there. If you're starting to walk down on the last, you know, it's like five steps up if you're going down.
Did you say this is on paid parking or not on paid parking?
It is on paid parking, but I only can come up once. So I got to hit all these points. Okay, the second point, when I get to the paid parking thing is, this is a test that you're running. Don't put an extra burden on these businesses until we figure out if this test is going to work or not. And that leads to the next thing, is we do marketing, and if, I was not a favor of the paid parking, but for you guys, I have sympathy, because it might work. And when you do stuff, it can break everything, or it can increase things. And what we do when we do the marketing is we measure it, and we have a target. We say, this is the target. Is it working or not? And if you guys would help a lot of the people saying, these are, this is our goal, right? Here are hard targets. We hit them. We were right. You were wrong. Or you miss them. We were wrong. Well, let's start making adjustments to get those. And if those were published, that would be very helpful. Then to your statements, Commissioner, FYI, through the businesses, the nickname for St. Joe is St. No. I was with my sister when she had to open up the business, and I got to, you know, see all the different struggles. I'm like, really? I think you're, you're dead on is to change that environment, because we all want the vibrant downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Next public comment? Over here? Yeah.
Lisa Miller, Forever Clean Soapworks, State Street, St. Joe. A lot of business owners have been talking to me about their loss of sales. And it's been anywhere from 30% to 60%. Myself, I've taken a loss of 50% since this has been enacted. And that's basically a big cut in pay. Have any of you taken a cut in pay in the last couple of weeks? Because there's a lot of business owners out here that have taken a huge cut in pay. Memorial Day didn't make up for it. Next weekend is not going to make up for it. The tourists coming in is not going to make up for that big cut in pay. So there's an issue. I'd like to propose that we do something like Monday through Thursday, free parking, or after 5:00 PM, free parking. Let's, throw us a bone. Let's give the residents and the local people, and when I say residents and local people, we're talking all the way to Battle Creek. These people are talking about, I'm not going to St. Joe. Niles, I'm not going to St. Joe. South Bend, I'm not going to St. Joe. It has become a thing that people aren't going to St. Joe now. And we need something. We need some kind of relief, something where the residents will go, hey, we can go down there now, every evening, except Friday and Saturday, and we can go and we can enjoy our ice cream. We can enjoy the restaurants. Because when the restaurants who have to prep their food and pay for their waiters and waitresses, and they have zero tables at 5:00 PM, that is awful. Chan's Garden have four tables at noon? That's awful. And that's hurting St. Joe. And also, I see a lot, we need to all get on the same page. Your, the police need to get on the same page, the ones handing out the tickets, because we see people getting tickets as they're going to the meters to pay, and they're coming back and finding a ticket on their car. And also, the people who have waivers, okay, I don't know if anybody else in here has a waiver, they're getting tickets. Who do I give this to? I have a waiver, and for 13 days, I didn't get a ticket, but I got one tonight. So that needs to be addressed, that it needs to all be on the same page. Had an argument with the two very nice officers who came up to my car the other day while I was unloading stuff to go to my business. And one person said I wasn't in the system, and the other officer said, oh, yes, she is. And those two had an argument about whether or not I was in the system. I am in the system. She, she.
Thank you.
She actually got rid of that ticket, but.
Who wants this one? Anybody?
Steve. I'll reach out to you. Lisa, we can reach out to you tomorrow to work through it. Great. Next public comment? Any others?
In the jukebox, I wrote, I didn't make an offer. I'm so sorry. Hi, Kelly Wilson, 533 Upton Drive. I own Perennial Accents. So there's a lot of talk about the locals not showing up, and I've been doing a lot of analysis. And I would say on any given day, locals are 22% to 38%, maybe even 48% of my business. And no, they're not coming in. Very few, about 3% to 8% that are willing to come through the door. And as we were told, hey, let's just give this test a try, we will not survive a summer test at this rate. But what I really want you to understand is, if I lose my business, I lose my house. I'm not the only one. So while this is a test, that's great. That's great. But if I default on my loan, I lose way more than my business, and my nine employees lose way more than a year-round job. And the sacrifice that I make through the winter, so that I can keep them on, so that they can make their financial commitments, means nothing. It means nothing. So I know we need money, and looking at the budget, it's a drop in the bucket. And we're sacrificing our downtown businesses for a drop in the bucket. So I appreciate the proposal, and I beg for locals to be given a waiver for parking, because if we lose our locals, and then we lose them the other eight or nine months a year, we're really the ones of us that could hang on, because maybe we're bigger, and our stores that we bought has been there for 30 years, and we can manage to survive. The small ones cannot. It cannot. And they're likely to not get replaced because of the thought about St. Joe. And the reason no one's developed here, and we got to really look at our city, because our inspectors and our, I was told when I wanted to replace my awnings, that I couldn't replace my awning on the front. And by the way, did I really need it anyway? Does anyone really see it? And I thought, wow, is that your call, or is that mine? So you'll see Lichten on my awnings until I have the extra time to go fight, or decide if I really want my awning up front, or do I just say, okay, I'll rip it down and just come up with some other look. But those kind of battles, they're ridiculous. They're ridiculous. I'm known in town for providing style and change and offering that for our locals and our guests. And then when I have someone behind the desk ask me, do I really want to make that change? Is it really worthwhile? Does anyone notice it? I find it offensive, quite frankly. I appreciate the effort. I appreciate the time. And if there's anything that I can do, a lot of us have quite the resume. I'm willing to offer my time to help look at budgets with a calculator, with a red pen, because I think our city, we shouldn't be paying pensions. If you want a pension, go work at the state level. We're too small. Thank you.
Next, please.
Go ahead. Good afternoon. I'm Cindy Bogner, and I'm the manager at Glick's. And I just want to point out, first off, I don't speak for Glick's. I speak for myself. I had a business down here, or I've worked down here for over 30 years. As the one gentleman said, parking has always been a problem. And it was never about us against our visitors, the locals. It was always, you know, people coming to the lake and taking up all-day parking. It was never about them being in front of the stores. But I'm going to move on, because that's been talked about a lot. I have an interesting perspective, because we get the ad, we get the zip code of every single person that comes into our store. So I can tell you that we have a lot of locals that shop down here, and we love you. And we don't consider locals just people who live in St. Joe, as much as all the other areas around here might want to not say this. When you tell somebody where you're from, St. Joe, you could live in Stevensville, you could live in Bridgman, you could live in Coloma. Everybody knows where St. Joe is. And I consider you guys family, Northern Illinois, Northern Indiana. You are our family, and we love having you. And I'm so sorry to the woman whose, you know, mother is at the Whitcomb thinks we're awful. We love you. This is a great town. And I ran into a gentleman today from Madison, Indiana. He got a ticket. The kiosk wasn't working. He said he'd never come back down here again. I have his name, and I, he is a business owner from there. I looked him up. He is who he says he is. And I just, I like the idea, Monday through Thursday, free parking, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, paid parking. I don't want to see just after 5:00, because we rely on not just people that live in St. Joe. We love you. You have a great town. I mean, awesome town. We just all want to survive and do what's best for everybody. Right now, this isn't it. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next public comment? In the back? Okay, take your time.
My name's Kelly Arnold. I'm the manager of Jewel Fire Diamond Center. That's 420 State Street. I have family who live here in St. Joe. I myself am a Sodas resident. However, being the manager of Jewel Fire, I've noticed, Memorial Day weekend, I was working on Saturday, it should be a busy weekend for our store. And much like Glick's, we also capture the zip code of all of our, all of our customers. Our clientele is almost all locals. We get some out-of-town people shopping with us during the summer. Last year, our tourists were actually down. So looking at this year, since parking has been in place, we have had two of our worst sales days ever on record. When I say two of our worst sales, sales days, I mean, we were lucky to scrape out with $200. We're a jewelry store. We also are in repairs. So gold prices are at an all-time high right now. Many of you know, gold is a high item for investments. Gold prices are almost $3,500 an ounce. So our repairs add up. To make $200 in the till is not sustainable. Not when I have 11 staff. So many of, everyone that I employ, except myself and our assistant manager in training, are all part-timers. I have seen multiple time on the news, when many of yourself were interviewed, saying that it seems like we have too many employees downtown. That is not the case. We are trying to survive with our businesses in a climate where prices keep rising for everything. We need a healthy downtown to have a healthy community. I do not appreciate commentary when it seems like the employees are the problem, we're taking up too many spaces. So what can we do going forward? I am so in favor of allowing residential parking, a waiver, something, free parking during the week, because I came up here weeks ago and said, I have had calls saying that we will not be coming to your store anymore. Many people here looked at me like I was crazy. My $200 cash days are proof that they were not lying to me. We will not be sustainable long-term. If this is a trial run, unfortunately, this can't be, because it's very hard to go backwards from something like this. You can only keep the parking meters at this point. You can alter your plan, but once those parking meters are in place, they will not come out. You all have a right to vote. Make sure to vote this far.
Next public comment?
My name is Kim, and I work at Perennial Accents. I've been downtown for over three decades. I've told you all this before. I found my niche at Perennial Accents, and I love, love, love it. But I'm really super sad right now. I am so sad because I don't have the people that I'm helping. I'm not helping create something beautiful for them. What I'm doing is I'm looking at merchandise going, you need a good home to go to, but no one's coming in. I walk outside, I look up and down the streets. No one, no one on either side of the street. There's cars there, but just on the streetscapes. The lots are always empty. And that struggle of us needing to park over here to walk over there, I was fortunate enough to get a pass, and I appreciate. I was fortunate enough to get a pass and I appreciate that. Thank you very much. But not everyone can do that. We need an employee lot on that side. And that will alleviate some of the problem on this side so that these people can let their clients come in. I've heard multiple talks from businesses that are in the third bank. And their clients don't have parking because we're over there. Therapists. We need to see our therapist and if we can't find a place to park, we lose our, because we're there for a reason. And we're driving around, driving around, driving around. Oh, my gosh, oh, my gosh. Okay, I've already cut into 15 minutes of my session time. So now I'm only going to get 40 minutes. So then you go in, you're upset about that. And then you forget all, all about your other problems, but you don't because they're still there. Because you're so bad about having to lose your time. We need a parking space on that side for employee parking only. Make it employee only. It's a dollar an hour. Give us one lot. It's, it can't be that hard for you guys to give us one lot, especially with the different, I mean, and it's a first come, first served like it is with the passes. And so then, hey, if you get in there, cool. Like we went through last summer with the all-day, like half of the lot is all day. The other half was three hours. Well, sometimes you get there, you got on the all-day side. Sometimes you didn't. Sometimes you had to go on a three-hour side. So in three hours, I gotta go move my car, but I'm working a 10-hour shift today. So you guys, I'm going to excuse myself from my coworkers because I gotta go move my car. So then my next coworker comes in and says, oh, gosh, I forgot, I'm in a three-hour lot. They now have to go and run and find a spot. And they could be driving around and driving around and driving around. And I've said it as well as a lot of other people here, we're a beach town. Always have been, always will be. At some point, the thought should have occurred to someone to maybe try and build up. I know that's a lot of, lot of dollars when you're thinking about the parking structures and spaces. But thank you for listening. I really appreciate you.
Thank you. Uh, next, any other public comment? Please.
I'm Dale Michael. I am one of the owners of the Broad Street Mercantile. I am, and I have to apologize to all of you here. I hear what you're saying. I agree with you 100% because my customers, even though I don't have paid parking and if all of a sudden tomorrow there's parking meters in front of my store, yeah, I will get the saw out. But what I want to say to you guys is you're hearing everybody here. There's tears in people's eyes. There's business owners here that this, this is their livelihood. This is what they do every day. This is what they bring to St. Joe. I didn't grow up in St. Joe. I'm from Chicago and you can hiss and boo all you want. But we looked at this side of the lake as a wonderful place for us to come that was different from Chicago, that we enjoyed every minute we were here. And you look at a lot of the cars that come from Chicago, they have parking stickers because they got smart. They didn't want to pay to park. So the residents of the cities, the suburbs, the areas in Chicago got a parking sticker. I think that would be a win-win for everybody because nobody wants to lose here. And I know you guys have put a lot of time and effort into this. But you have to have a win-win. We need a win. Our businesses are hurting. Even mine down the street by Clementine's is hurting. And what I, what I'm hearing from my customers, and I do run the data every day like so many people do, 68.9% of my customers are local. They come into my shop and say, we're so glad you're here and we're so glad we don't have to pay to park. Who's responsible for it? Now I know your faces and I can say, we're going to be handing out the list saying, these are the people who implemented this. But what we need is from you. You've listened to everybody speak tonight and that's great. But what are you going to do? What's, what is your transparency to us to say, this is what we thought we would do. This is a revenue we thought we would get. This is what we got. We need to hear that. We need to understand what your plan is other than we're putting in parking meters because we want to raise money. You have to be very transparent because all of us are hanging by a thread. And we also need to hear back from you. We listened. Here's some compromises. Here's some win-wins. We have, businesses have to walk away with something. Or what you're going to end up with is a city that, and I've been to them. Think about what New Buffalo looks like. Empty store, empty store, empty store. They put in parking, killed it. Lake Geneva, Wisconsin, put in parking meters, killed it. They had to take them out to bring it back. Don't be the government that said, we had to take step back. Figure out how you can make this work and get wins for everybody here. Because St. Joe's a great city. I'm glad I moved my business here. I don't regret it. So please help everybody who came here tonight, gave up their free time to talk to you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Dale Hagler, 466 Upton Drive, 384 Upton Drive, 382 Upton Drive, 446 Upton Drive. Used to be 2650 Niles Avenue. The reason I say that, Neon Grill. The first two weeks that we opened in 1992, we had a broiler. We were going to broil burgers. That worked out for about three days. And I said, no, we just can't keep up. We took the broiler out and sold it. It was like brand new. I'm not saying take the meters out and sell them, but you do have a choice. You could give them to another city and see how they do it. But it's fine. The reason, the reason I wanted to get up and say something to you all is because I come across the bridge three times a day to drop her off at the Whitcomb so she can walk with an elderly lady. When I do that, I turn right on the street that the Whitcomb is on. Since the meters have been active, there's been one to two cars on that street. Before the meters were active, the street was filled. So if that's an indicator, I would say, look at the other streets. Because that street is empty since the meters have been active. That's all I got.
Next public comment?
Hi, my name is Melanie Bonifant. My husband and I own G and A on, at 307 State Street. My husband, he's here 7:30 every morning, five to six days a week. Prior to the day that the parking started, there was always been a row of five to seven cars parked in front of our store. We're not open then. The coffee shops are open. And since that day, there have been no cars parked in front of our store. I don't know how the coffee shops are, are dealing with this, but there is, I mean, it is night and day difference. I would like to make a suggestion, the subcommittee, I think, great idea. I would love to see some business owners from that side of the store or this, that side of the street. I don't know if there is any currently. I know there's some from this side. But that side, um, my husband has data, we've been here for five years. He writes down every single day, our sales, the temperature and whether the sun was out that day. And I can tell you that the last two weeks have been really rough and we've seen some really poor numbers. And it's not because of the weather, because we've had, we've had bad weather in these last two weeks before. We've got it written down. So it's not just the weather. My husband sat and watched an elderly lady try to manage the kiosk in front of our store, the, the parking meter. He, he watched his watch. She stood out there for eight minutes in the rain and she could not figure out how to register her vehicle. So finally he went out there and helped her because he was like, I can't watch her anymore. Timed her for eight minutes. Guess who's not going to come park in front of our store again? Because she's not going to do that. And, and she's not going to put the app on her phone to, to, to be able to do that. The very first day that the parking was, the paid parking was instituted, I got a message on Facebook. I manage our Facebook page. So now I have to pay to park it or I have to pay to shop at your store. So they're not looking at it that they just have to pay to park in St. Joe. They're looking, I have to pay to come spend money at your store now? And so I tried very diplomatically, say, well, number one, this is not on us. We did not make this decision. We were not consulted about this. And, you know, we're trying to make the best of it. She said she was disabled. She was in a wheelchair. Where am I supposed to go? So I looked up the website. You know, people, they don't have the information that they need to get to our businesses. Next week, so my husband came home today. He does our weekly schedule on Wednesdays. He came home today. Thank you. I'm going to finish my sentence. Next week, he took 50 hours off of our employee schedules for next week. That means we're planning on needing 50 less hours to run our business next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Julie Stephen, 1111 Flanders Place. I work downtown part-time and I worked the last two days. And it was very slow. And I wanted to approach this from a different perspective. Where I work, we pride ourselves in customer service and being friendly. And we want people to have a really good experience. These sweet people were coming in and they were like, I'm changing a battery in their watch or I'm trying to clean a piece of jewelry. And they're like, uh, uh, can you, can you speed it up, please? Because I, I got, I only have five more minutes left on the meter. And that's not good for us either because our repairs that we rely on to bring in extra business also bring people in to look at our inventory. So we're not, they're not having a leisurely, lovely, beautiful jewelry store experience. They're like, get me taken care of and get me out of here because I gotta get to the meter. One lady had to leave her two kids. I said, I'll watch them. Don't worry. She was picking out crucifix for her grandson. She left them with me and I said, don't worry. You go feed the meter. I'm going to stay right here with the kids. And she went and fed the meter, had to come back. I don't know if she didn't know how to re-up with her app or whatever, but she was elderly. And then I had another man, I was changing his battery. He's standing right by my shoulder. I'm like, whoa, please don't look at, please don't watch me while I'm doing this. I'm nervous and, but I got it done. And he was like, okay, I gotta get out of here. I gotta get out of here. So that, we want people, and that's going to happen in all the other stores too. We used to have the two, oh, and a girlfriend today, she tried to get her girlfriends to go to dinner with her downtown. They, they wouldn't go. And she said, I love going downtown, having dinner, strolling around. You've got your, you know, your parking for so many hours. And then go get an ice cream or go walk over to the park on the bluff. She goes, nobody wants to do that because you're on the clock and you're worrying about your ticking on your clock and that you're going to have to go feed the meter again. But we just want our customers to come in, not worry about their time and enjoy their experience and let us make a good experience for them instead of trying to calm them down. And that's what, that's what we're doing. We're like, we're so sorry. But, you know, I understand, but it's just a different, it's a customer perspective I wanted you to hear. Because every single customer in the last two days that I took care of, talked about the parking. And like, we, we are trying to be positive, really, really positive. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Diane Rook. I live at 1916 South State Street. I work downtown. I don't work in retail. But I propose, first of all, I appreciate your comments. They were very positive. They were very sincere about this committee for the parking. I love the ideas about adding more people, changing them up because that's what you need. But I will positively tell you, in my years of experience in running project management, in technology, a sure sign of a failed project. This is a project that was implemented is that within two weeks, the number of tweaks and changes that you have had to make is while from many perspectives, it's good and it shows that you're listening and things like that. But a well-executed project should not be doing this. It shouldn't happen. When you do the research, when you have the metrics, when you have the milestones to prove that you are executing appropriately according to the plan, my recommendation to you is that you cannot do this on the backs of these people at all. You can't bag the meters now, reconvene, reconvene and continue the, this discussion on how this can either be corrected or it will go down as an epic failure of this city. Thank you very much.
Andy Vescalani, owner of the toy company. Many of you know my stance on this from well before it was enacted. Hasn't changed. If anything, I've, I've seen the results and it's, it's doing exactly what I thought it would. I've spent a lot of time just kind of angry at you guys for maybe the wrong reasons. Because I realize you're, you're human. You make mistakes. We all make mistakes. You've made a big mistake. I think this is a good testament to that, the fact that this is, is a mistake. And it hurts to see my neighbors suffer. It's one thing, 40-year-old business. We can survive a little longer than some. We're hurting, but what hurts equally is seeing these people hurting. I guess my question to you is how many businesses have to die before we find this unsuccessful? And it's going to happen. It's, at this point, it's inevitable. So I guess I do apologize for some of my remarks and, and things that maybe come off sideways in anger. But it's true. It, it is anger. This is hard. This is really hard for business owners. It's really hard for locals and it's really hard to see locals boycotting us. These are the people that fought through COVID with us. We, we survived COVID because of them. And now they're feeling like they're punished. And we're still alive because of them. You guys really need to rethink this. Michael, I offered, if you wanted to lend me a bulldozer, I could take care of the issue in a day. I meant that. But in all seriousness, you guys, please just get back to the drawing board, figure out a different solution, eliminate this and let's move on. Let's go be successful. You don't see Starbucks coming up with a new plan because they have too many people. They get more employees, they add parking, they find better, they find solutions to having a popular product. We need a solution for our popular product that doesn't alienate and eliminate our customers.
Thank you. Other public comment? Sure, come on up.
Debbie Johnson, 1919 Forest. I've spoken on the parking before. I'm not in favor of it and I'm still not. I feel so bad for all of the businesses. Like the gentleman said before me, you know, I think a lot of the residents supported all of the businesses during COVID. And for me, I am, you know, so sorry they're going through this now. And I don't, I don't think it's fair to, I, I've, I've heard a feeling, comments. don't, um, I don't think it's fair to, I, I've, I've heard of feeling, um, comments made that the, um, the locals that aren't going to the store are, you know, should be blamed for the businesses' problems. And I don't like that, um, point of view. Um, because the people are taxpayers and we deserve the right, uh, to, to enjoy the beautiful amenities of our city going to the park. I know a lot of people who like to go downtown and meet friends and just stroll through the stores or just sit in the park and play cards, whatever. Uh, so that's just one comment I hadn't heard before about just being able to enjoy our beautiful city. And, um, another comment someone made before too, that I, I agree with a lot of the comments. Um, but the, the band show, um, the concerts, you know, Wednesdays, Fridays and Sundays, um, your clientele there are mostly pretty, um, high on the age scale. And it's just, it's, it's not easy to be able to have to feed a meter when you're paying for the band to begin with and then to walk across four lanes of traffic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Did you already make one on this one or was it a different one? All right, come on up.
Again, my name is Neil Vernasco, 1510 Bernice Avenue, St. Joseph. I hate it when people call this St. Joe. It's St. Joseph. I guess I'd like, first I'd like to know, did everyone here on this commission vote for this? If you come to the decision that you've made a mistake, I would appreciate it. And I'm sure everyone in this area would appreciate it that you apologize, make a public apology that you made a mistake, you tried, you thought you were doing what was best, but you made a mistake. So I'm hoping, I'm praying that we'll be hearing a public apology from all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, I'm not seeing any more. Um, there was no action on this. This was an updated report. So we can move along to our next item of business and that one is item number 14, zoning ordinance amendment sections 18.2.6, 18.2.7c, table 18-1, parking standards, City of St. Joseph, first reading. Is this Kristen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, Kristen.
Probably should wait about 30 seconds.
Yeah, just, yeah.
It still has to do with parking.
Yeah, let's just wait. There she is.
There she is.
Go ahead.
Um, the planning commission has been working on and off for the last almost five years on chapter 18, parking, and then part of section, um, 3.26 of the zoning ordinance. Since it's been dragging on, um, the staff and the planning commission decided just to finish their work on table 18-1 of the zoning ordinance, which provides all of the regulations on how you calculate required onsite parking. Um, we had done research before. We did case studies for individual properties. So we completed that finally. The planning commission held a public hearing on May 1st and they unanimously recommended approval of the proposed changes that you have in your packet. Um, some of the changes, some of the issues with the orig, the existing language in the ordinance gets back to, there's different ways to calculate required parking based on floor area, usable floor area, employee counts, table counts, and that was very confusing and difficult to do for new developers coming in. In addition, we had some uses that were duplicated in the table, making it longer. We had hotels listed in one part. We had motels listed in another part. They're the same parking regulation, the same type of use. Um, so we went through and combined a lot of the items following more of table 4-1 of the zoning ordinance, which, um, provides the different use groups. So there's like a general retail and there's a, um, service use and we followed along that category. So we grouped more things together. So if you were a general office, under the proposed changes, the parking requirements are now the same as like a general retail space. There's no difference. So it's easier to go back and forth if you had a change of use in a tenant space. Um, so the proposed changes would, um, would not require people to add more parking spaces there. If they're deficient, we think most of the properties will become, are, are fine with the way they are with the different uses that are, um, being provided. We did also look at reducing required onsite parking for several different categories. And again, trying to consolidate the uses into more manageable numbers, um, was very helpful for everybody to do. Um, we also looked at, um, defining, so everything is based on a square foot of the building. We're not excluding any areas. So that's another reason why the number, the person, how you calculate was a larger number because we're accounting for those spaces. But we believe that in a lot of the areas, the required onsite parking will go down if someone was doing a new construction. Um, we also looked at, we also had different numbers for if you were using bench seating. We had numbers that were 18 inches or 24 inches. We increased it to 24 inches, again decreasing the number of required onsite parking spaces if you use that type of use. Um, another change we did was, or the planning commission is recommending approval of, is decreasing required onsite parking. Um, because we had a, we knew we had a variance application coming in with Four Flags properties on Lake Shore Drive. And so we had done some research, provided that to the planning commission. Um, so parking for apartment complexes, multiple family, went from two spaces to 1.25 spaces per dwelling unit. And in addition, in the downtown area, um, in the D District, parking is being recommended to go from 1.5 spaces per dwelling unit to one part, 1.0 parking spaces per dwelling unit where it is required. There, if you do an interior remodel of an existing building and you have less than six new dwelling units, you are not required to provide any new onsite parking. You don't have to provide it at all. Um, so a lot of it was just combining some uses up, following more of table 4-1, which I think is helpful. In addition, food and drink, um, now also that use category in table 4-1 includes taverns and bars. We had two different categories on how we calculated those. Um, we went with a straight square footage like we did with most zoning districts. And then we made some changes to the indoor and outdoor entertainment. Um, combined up a lot of that. So it made the, the document much smaller than what it was in the past. While doing some of the research, I did pull out the previous zoning ordinance, which kinda more, not completely aligns, but the, the square footage numbers were the same. So we're kinda going back and I think that'll be helpful going forward. Um, when this originally started with the planning commission, we were looking at also major revisions to all of table, all of chapter 18 of the zoning ordinance and incorporating the, how you get to a piece of property like your curb cut, um, those regulations all into one chapter. Because of their workload, we kind of abandoned that for right now. That is something on their, their agenda for future. But, um, so we went with this route because as part of those changes, we had drafted on and off over time. Um, also looking at fee and lieu. So if someone couldn't provide any parking, there might be an option to provide a fee to put towards a parking fund. In addition, land banking required parking. So if you believed you didn't need all that parking and you could supply enough, you could keep areas on your property for future parking if it was ever needed for a different use, um, while complying with the zoning ordinance regulations. And then we were also looking at bicycle parking and EV parking, EV charging station requirements for larger developments to be in keeping with what's going on throughout the United States. Um, so a lot of the information is in the past packets. I did not include that. The research, the different charts we went through, scenarios we ran. Um, in regards to the multiple family changes that were recommended, um, we did look at each of the apartment complexes in the City of St. Joseph. We ran, public safety ran traffic counts. They drove through the parking lots during different times of the day over about a week, week, week or two ti, or two-week time period. And the planning commission was comfortable with 1.25 spaces in those developments. And that's about where we were at with the most compact development or apartment complex. So, um, we're requesting approval of the first reading of this amendment if there's. I know I did it really fast. I know we've been here a long time. So, um, if there's specific questions, I can answer those.
Thank you. Well, we're just gonna do the presentation. We'll take public comment after that. Thank you. Um, questions from the commission?
I think anytime you go from 90 categories that you're monitoring down to 28, uh, it represents an improvement. Yeah. So I definitely think that this is a step in the right direction. However, what I also think it represents is not far enough in terms of simplifying this. Um, you know, as you look through it, there's, there's still a lot of, you know, categories and, you know, looking at these numbers, they're, you know, and, and if you learn a little bit more about, you know, where parking minimums come from, a lot of them are truly made up by the communities at the time that they, you know, enacted them. Uh, and an example of this, you know, we have in this proposal, facilities for the dead, you know, one, one space for each four persons, you know. And I, I tend to think that, uh, the person that's probably gonna have the best idea of how many parking spaces they need for whatever they're developing is whoever's developing the property. You know, and so I do think that we are, you know, rules like this, an overregulation like this, it hampers what developers can do. They, they know what they're gonna do if you limit them. That said, from where we are today, this is a great improvement. And so I'm, you know, inclined to move forward and approve this. However, I think we need to take a step further and actually have the planning commission or, you know, uh, I'm not exactly satisfied with a great, with a five-year turnaround time on studying this. So maybe the sustainability committee, other one that could maybe take a faster look at exploring whether park, uh, eliminating parking requirement, minimums altogether would be a more viable option for us. Um, I'm inclined to have us move forward with this vast improvement, um, but also moving this to the appropriate committee, whether that be planning commission again or trying to see if we can get a study done faster through the sustainability committee, um, to evaluate a recommendation on just eliminating parking minimums altogether.
I'd have to echo your comments. I'm, I'm no expert in planning and everything, but the, the conferences and the trainings that I have done do talk about having zero parking sp, spaces, um, required. But again, I, I agree with you saying this is a great step in the right direction. Let's, let's move forward with it. And we keep taking a look at what we need to do to make this successful.
Just for a point of clarification. So in the D Downtown District, for all of the commercial and retail spaces or office space, there are no required parking. The only parking required is for a hotel or for a dwelling unit under certain situations. Regarding the, um, persons for the dead or those types of facilities, we just kind of kept with what it was because we didn't know where else to put it. And we were trying to keep the same categories that are listed in table 4-1, having them in somewhere in the parking regulations. And that's how we, we got to that point.
Thank you for that. And I think that, that goes, you know, my comments are more historically based. At some point when these things, you know, in the 60s and 70s, when these, they got made up at some point. But I, I do understand that we're, uh, we're keeping with what we had. And this, again, thank you for your work. This, this really does condense it. Uh, and it's, it's really way better than where we were.
Yes.
Um, it's just, it's, it's not far enough. And, um, you know, it takes more effort to get there, but, uh, thank you for.
Yeah, specifically, I, I appreciate some of the simplicity around the multiple family dwellings as well. I know I did that out a couple of different ways. So I'm glad that that is just, it, it, it reads simpler and, um, it's no secret I would like more affordable housing. A lot of times that means multiple family units. So I think it just makes it easier for developers to start looking at us in that way.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
No, I, I agree with you. Um, there's a lot to look through, but it's a lot better than it was.
All right. What is the pleasure of the commission?
So I moved to approve an ordinance to amend article 13, Off-Street Parking and Loading, Section 18 dot 2 dot 6, Measurement and Calculations, to define square feet, non-durable goods and durable goods, uh, and to modify the definition of seating capacity in section 18 dot 7 dot 2 dot 7 dot C, Table 18-1, Parking Standards, to modify use categories to correspond with the use classes in Table 4-1, standardize parking formulas and reduce some parking requirements in the zoning ordinance of the City of St. Joseph, Michigan, based on the factors set forth under section 22.3 of the zoning ordinance.
Support.
All right. Public comment. I think you said you had something.
Brooke, can I just ask a clarified question?
Absolutely.
I'm so sorry. Um, do you want to include in your motion language to direct the planning commission to look at the
Is it appropriate to do two separate motions or lump it all in one motion?
To you guys, I just wanna make sure we've got your guidance clear.
Hadn't forgotten, so.
Can the second one just be a directive to have staff look at it and report back to the commission? I think that's how we've done it in the past.
That's gonna be more effective.
Okay, thank you.
I'll keep my motion.
Thank you. Public comment, did you?
No.
Okay. Any, any public comment on the matter? All right. Um, Abby called the roll. Commissioner Searola?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. I believe that is it for agenda items. We can now move along to city comments. So city manager comments.
So soon. Um, I just wanna, I know that, um, it has been a hard 13 days, um, and the weeks in advance of that. Um, and the staff has worked very, very hard on the work that has been rolled out. And while I know it is controversial, um, I do want to share my appreciation for how hard they have worked um, because they are exhausted. Um, and it's been thankless. And so I just wanna, you know, we'll continue to work. We'll continue to adapt and change, but I wanna share my appreciation for all that they've done.
Thank you. All right. Commission comments?
Obviously, parking's a huge issue. Um, we don't have the volume we need, whether it's paid or unpaid. I think, I think we can acknowledge that. Um, we put off the redo of parking lot 11, which is right across the street uh, because the total cost of the project was $1.7 million, far outpacing what we had budgeted. Uh, additionally, um, closing down part of that parking lot for the summer to get the maintenance done and redo it, um, was not appropriate. Again, given the parking challenges we're facing. But I would just like to say on the, on the look forward on parking lot 11, um, I strongly suggest we revisit a design option on parking lot 11 that was not, um, chosen. The alternate design I saw adds 36 parking spaces, um, by slightly encroaching to the tree lawn on Broad. Um, and it still leaves an appropriate distance, 10 feet between Broad and the parking lot. It will cost us some trees. It's never popular to remove trees, but I would suspect we can replace them with something smaller in a different area. So we have, don't reduce the tree count in total in St. Joe. I just think there's too much benefit to dismiss the idea, uh, because of the loss of a few trees. Uh, 36 extra parking spaces is extremely valuable and something that we can overlook. So, uh, when parking lot 11, um, when the discussion is renewed about moving forward, I strongly consider, I would strongly ask that we consider the alternate, uh, parking design, which added the 36 spaces.
Anyone else?
I think I just wanna address that, uh, we do appreciate all the input from the business owners and the residents. We do write everything down. We do discuss everything. All of your ideas are, are in our heads and they're all things that we are considering. So I don't want you to think you leave here and you're not heard. You are heard.
Thank you for saying that. We're just on city comments right now. Thank you.
No, we've heard it a few times.
I'll make a hard pivot away from parking to really thank the volunteers, Southwest Michigan Tourist Council and St. Joe today for their efforts to keep the lighthouse open this summer. Um, we had 45 people who came out in the rain last week um, because they were that excited to climb up in the lighthouse. to climb up in the lighthouse and that was really, really encouraging to see. So I'm grateful for my fellow commissioners' support of that initiative, really St. Joe Today, that group, an incredible group of volunteers, thanks, Tim, and, and Southwest Michigan Tourist Council. So we open, we open for business on Saturday, the seventh, so come up to the lighthouse, it's great. You don't pay for parking there?
That's a parks.
It's parks. You don't pay for parking.
I was gonna just echo your comments on the, the lighthouse tours. I went and saw the lighthouse for the first time, I've been wanting to do that for years. Thank you for your work on all of that and for getting the groups together, the volunteers for coming out and putting on that really valuable service to our community. And farmers markets are underway, so let's enjoy the summer. And I guess that concludes our meeting and we'll wrap up at eight thirty PM. Thought we were gonna be late, good job, guys.
No.
Oh, no, it's not tonight. That's, that's the next time. Oh, okay. Is that, what was the study session on?
Full session?
Yeah.
Dirty stuff?
That's what it was, okay.
Yeah.
I just wanna, I wanna make sure I had.